All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on the September 19th, 2018 at 7:02 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Fowler in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would now please silence all cellphones and electronic devices to avoid any disturbance or disruptions to those around you. And if you would also please join me in a moment of silence. All right. First on our agenda this evening is appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice, and I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for principal of Arlington Collegiate High School, principal for Bowles Junior High, and assistant principal for Alsley Junior High.
Great. Mr. Chapa?
I move that we approve the administrative appointments just referenced.
Motion by Mr. Chapa, second by Mr. Hogg to approve the administrative appointments. Don't see any light-signifying discussion, so please vote. All right. All trustees present, vote in the affirmative. Ms. Mays is unable to join us out of town on business tonight, and Mr. Hibbs will be joining us late this evening. So with that, congratulations, and Dr. Cavassos, please, announcements and introductions.
Thank you, President Rice, and first, I'd like to introduce the new principal for Arlington Collegiate High School, Mr. Jeff Krieger.
I thought I might even have to use the gavel. Hey, Al!
So Jeff attended University of Nebraska to obtain Bachelor of Science, University of Texas at Arlington, for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the assistant principal at Arlington Collegiate High School, has been a specialist in our Career Tech Department, has also been an assistant principal in Kennedale ISD, and has taught ninth through 12th grade business at Bowie High School also. So Jeff, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Board President Dr. Rice, Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, team members of the board, I greatly appreciate this opportunity to stand before you today. As I'm approaching now my 20 years here in teaching and education, so about 20 years ago, the summer coming up, I walked into this building to become a classroom teacher at Bowie High School. And through these 20 years, I've been very blessed with great relationships that allowed me to get to this point on my leadership journey. But first and foremost, I need to make sure the most important part of my relationship is my wife, Melanie Krieger. Not only is she fantastic as unbelievable mother and wife, but she is also a fantastic instructional coach here in Foster Elementary, and also Teacher of the Year at Foster Elementary School as well. So as many of my colleagues in here know, the sacrifice of being a school administrator requires a lot of time and a lot of patience, and she has been my champion all the way throughout, telling me exactly what I needed to know, maybe when I didn't always want to hear it, but I've been always very, very appreciative. I love you dear. Thank you. Also, thanks to my kids, Theodore Jefferson and Isabella Rose over there, my parents, Jerry and Galen Krieger back there as well, and also my mother-in-law who is watching on here as well. She's been very helpful in getting to this point, taking care of the home fronts. Moving into my professional life, I've been very blessed. My first principal AP job that I got was from Rita Pentavalli in Kennedale High School. I'm really appreciative of her giving that opportunity to get the whole journey going in my leadership time, so that part I'm very much appreciative of. Appreciative of senior staff's confidence in me and doing the work. Without that, I certainly would not be here. Certainly to Dr. Jarco and his confidence in me and his wanting to help me grow and his leadership confidence in me, I'm very appreciative. Also to Michelle Womuth, who just recently retired here from this district. Michelle has been a champion for me since my first days at Bowie, literally my first days at Bowie. She was an AP there, so without her wanting to help me grow as an educator and leader, I certainly would not be here. A huge thanks to Dr. Boland, where is he at? Dr. Boland, it's very soon, I would not be here without his support. If I had not been given that position at Arlington Collegiate High School, I have no illusions I would not be standing here today, so I'm very thankful. Our journey began at Bowie High School in 2010, when I worked as administrative intern and moved to this point, and I'm very much looking forward to our work as we move forward here in our early college high school work. And then, of course, I want to finish up here, the great ACHS faculty and staff back here behind us. Hashtag lion pride. I don't want to make any more noise.
I stand on your guys' shoulders today. I'm extremely appreciative of the support that you guys have given me, and I hope I can bring that support back via the great work that we can do. We've done incredible work already to this point, but I look forward to raising it up and keep going forward. So I hope I can justify your confidence in me as these times go on. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, guys.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new principal for Bowles Junior High, Dr. Angela Smith. Dr. Smith attended the University of North Texas in Denton for Bachelor of Arts in English, Texas Wesleyan University for Master of Ed in Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Walden University for Administrative Leadership Doctorate. Most recently, the interim principal at Bowles Junior High, has also been an assistant principal at Sam Houston High School, has been 21st Century Learning Center Grant Coordinator in Birdville ISD, and assistant principal in Eagle Mountain Saginaw, and has also taught English Language Arts in Birdville. Dr. Smith, congratulations.
Thank you very much. President Raj, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, I can't say how excited I am to be here. Three and a half years ago, I stood up here to be appointed an AP at Sam Houston, and at the time, I said I didn't have very many people to thank because I was new to the district, and that when I was back up here, I'd have a lot of people to thank, and I do. But because I know we're short on time, I will be short as well, I would like to acknowledge my youngest son Riley's here with me today. Okay, Riley. But first, I'd like to say, my largest thanks goes to Fernando Benavides. I did not know how well he prepared me to be a principal until I walked in the doors of Bowles. And I realized that every day, every conversation we had was helping me grow in that role. So thank you, Fernando. I really appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Tracy Brown for her mentorship and leadership and seeing something in me and encouraging me, as well as Christie Buell, who has been a great support system for me and very encouraging as well. My adopted brothers, Marcus Brannon and Pete Cavassos, who are not only great administrators, but great people, and I'm blessed to know them and have worked with them both. And then finally, the staff at Bowles, my people. I'm so thrilled to be a Bowles Bulldog where the best begins, and we will continue that tradition and get even better, and so I'm thankful and blessed for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Next, I'll introduce the assistant principal for the Dan Diaper Career and Technical Center, Mr. Jimmy Kalender. Jimmy attended Northeast Louisiana University for Bachelor of Science in Health and Physical Education, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies, most recently, an assistant principal at Alsley Junior High School, has taught PE and has been an avid coordinator and a coach at Bowie High School, and a PE and a coach at Barnett Junior High, has also taught World History in different districts, and has coached and is a sergeant in the Louisiana National Guard, has been that in the past as well. Jimmy, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, I truly want to thank you for this opportunity to serve the students of Career Tech Center and the Agricultural Science Center. It's an amazing place and amazing faculty. Also want to thank Ms. Thurston, who every day invited me into her office, open door policy, and who taught me how to be an administrator, and all the faculty at Alsley Junior High, who grew me and invited me into the Panther family, and just as a person, they grew me. I want to thank my wife, Nadrid, and my daughter, Karis. We are a big member of Arlington ISD. It fills our household, and we wouldn't have it any other way. I want to thank Dr. Jarco, Ms. Polster, for just believing in me and giving me this opportunity. And just an amazing district. Thank you for what you do for our students. It's a, I mean, truly, it is a blessing to see these kids and get to see them go on to career in college. It's all the work that you guys have done, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we'll make some introductions as we've appointed in the past different individuals, so I'd like to introduce the assistant principal for Martin High School, Mr. Stephen Smith. Stephen attended UT Austin. Yeah, there has to be a pause for that. For Marketing and International Business, UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, an assistant principal in Burleson ISD, has taught math and has been a teacher-coach in a variety of school districts, has also been in sales and marketing, has taught, has been an assistant men's basketball coach, biology and health, and coached at different high schools. Stephen, congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you. President Rice, trustees, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for giving me a moment to share my gratitude for this opportunity to serve the students and stakeholders at Martin High School. The vote of confidence that Mrs. Roddy and Dr. Buell have given me is one that I don't take lightly, and my goal is for each of you to look back, especially the decision-makers that decided to hire me that day in May, and realize that you made the right decision. And I know if that's the case, then I've done well by students and staff and the stakeholders of the Martin community. I was told to be brief, so I'll try to keep this under 20 minutes. Is that okay, Dr. Hill? Whether it was my kindergarten teacher, Ms. McBurney, at JP Ryan Elementary School in Southern Maryland, or my social studies teacher, Mr. Sam, R.L. Anderson, my counselor at Mansfield, Vernon Newsom, my principal at Mansfield, or Dr. Young, my finance professor at UT, along the way, each of those people have shared with me ideals that I think have led me to this night tonight. Accountability, servitude, and really leading with a passion for students is why I'm here. And those are my strengths, and I hope to be able to contribute to Mrs. Roddy's team that she has in place, and I've tried to do so thus far. Even though I'm a little hindered, it only kept me out four days, and it was a torn hamstring completely off the bone, and so, but I missed four days. I apologize for that, but I'm back. It has always been my goal to make the lives of those that I'm fortunate enough to come into contact with better off for having done so. And you have my word that I will approach every day with the commitment, dedication, and passion deserving of the students, staff, and stakeholders of Martin High School. Finally, I want to recognize my friends and family in attendance tonight. Each of them have supported me in my decision to become an educator in some way, shape, or form. I haven't had an opportunity to turn around, so I'm not sure who's here, but up front, Mrs. Roddy and Dr. Pyatt, Mrs. Lewis, and anybody else from Martin that may be here, Greg McQuitty. We've got a football game tonight, in case you guys didn't know that, so. And my father, Wayne Smith, my sister and her husband, Lori, and Justin Bridges, and somewhere back there, my wife, Shawna, and my daughters, Sidney and Sophie. And if I've forgotten anybody, I apologize, but thank you very much. Excited to get the rest of the year started, off crutches, hopefully after October 1st.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal for Seguin High School, Mr. Christopher Stroud. Christopher attended Texas Women's University in Denton for Bachelor of Science in Biology, Western Governors University in Texas for Master of Science in Ed Administration, most recently, a K-12 District Science STEM and Career Tech Coordinator in Advantage Academy in Duncanville, has also taught Physics in Mansfield ISD, and Biology in IPC in Irving ISD. Christopher, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Board President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. One of the people I like to really recognize is my wonderful supportive wife, who has been behind me for our last eight-year journey that we've had together and been very supportive of me, and just as some others have said, always giving me that feedback that you may want, may not want, and just always willing to push me forward and be supportive, and understanding of the late nights, being home with our three children who are two, four, and six. So I really say that even though my job can be difficult, that's where the, that's where the real work comes in. And I just appreciate my administrators that came to support me, Ms. Borden. Without Mr. Borden, just seeing it in me that I had something that would be useful at his campus and being useful to serve the students and stakeholders of Arlington ISD, I greatly appreciate the opportunity. He constantly pulls me in, he's like, hey, how are you doing? Are you, have you had a chance to sit down? No, not really. Okay, good, you're doing it right. Awesome. Keep moving. So he's always there as that support to just let me know that as I'm going through these things, that I'm, that just pushing forward, persevering, and are definitely the way to go. Seguin High School, from what I can already tell, just since I've been there since just the beginning, the start of the school year, that it is a family, and that no matter what it is, I can call on anybody there at any time, and they have my back, and it's a support system, and they know that I have theirs, and I just thank you all for the wonderful opportunity to be able to serve these students and to be able to use some of my skills to help grow the students and the faculty at Seguin High School.
Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal at Carter Junior High School, Albert Albert attended Arizona State University for Bachelor of Science in Liberal Studies, University of North Texas in Denton for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently, the mariachi music teacher at Young Men's and Young Women's Leadership Academy in Grand Prairie, has also been a mariachi teacher in Grand Prairie Fine Arts Center, Jackson Middle School, and Kennedy Middle School. Albert, congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, President Rice, members of the board. I'd like to take a quick moment to acknowledge some important people within the audience this evening. My mentor and previous principal, Ms. Patricia Cunningham, my sister-in-law and Sam Houston High School senior, Maria Ramirez, and last but not least, my very supportive wife and proud Sam Houston alumni, Beatriz Becerra, who has also became part of the AIC family as a secretary at Key Elementary this year. Beatriz, thank you for giving me a reason to reach for more in life. To those that cannot be with me tonight, Mr. George Hernandez, and Ms. Yandre Phillips, and the Ramirez family, I thank them for their ongoing support throughout my career. To all my former teachers and administrators back at home in El Paso, Texas, I am here because of the guidance and lessons you gave me throughout the years. I lost my place. To my mother, Letty Carrillo, and all the family in Phoenix, Arizona, I thank them for instilling in me the importance of education and always supporting me in reaching my goals. To Dr. Cavassos, I would like to personally thank you for being a great inspiration to a young Hispanic administrator like myself. I hope to continue to grow and learn under your leadership and one day become a superintendent as well. To my new Carter familia, teachers, staff, and our admin team, Ms. Becerra, Dr. Bell, Ms. Falls, and Mr. Kettler, thank you all for allowing me to be part of your team and for the support you have given me thus far and keeping me above water as I learn the ropes. I truly feel blessed to be a part of such a great community and a great district. I again thank you all for the opportunity to serve the Carter Junior High School family. I hope to grow la familia into a true gem that Arlington ISD can be proud of. Thank you all very much.
Next, another assistant principal for Carter Junior High School, Mr. Justin Kettler. Justin attended UT Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in History, University of Lamar for Master of Education and Administration, most recently, an instructional coach at Workman Junior High School, has taught eighth grade US History and has been a coach as well, has been a financial advisor and a licensed personal banker as well. Justin, congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Board President Rice, board members, and Dr. Cavassos. You know, I can't leave out Mrs. Herrera, Dr. Jarco, and everyone on the interview committee that saw something in me and recognized my passion for students. It's a tremendous honor to stand here before y'all, to serve the students, the families, and then the community of Carter Junior High. You know, even though I'm the one up here, ultimately, this really, this opportunity is really about the people that have supported me and guided me to this journey, and I really wish I had more time because I would go into much more detail on all of those people. But really professionally and personally, I've been supported in tremendous ways and given, you know, opportunities that I've, you know, really been appreciative of. You know, I've learned so much from my coworkers, the school leaders at Workman and Hutchinson before here, that, you know, I wouldn't have been able to get to this point without them. As far as personally goes, I cannot fail to thank two people. Of course, my wife and daughter are here, and Ashley, she's always been there to encourage me to go after my dreams, despite the fact that sometimes that means that she has to do more work and we make less money. But, you know, ultimately, you know, doing something that I have a passion for and, you know, having a, having a sense of, you know, gain from it is really what I need, you know, what I needed to do with my life, and so I really thank her for allowing me to do that. My mom, if it wasn't for my mom to show me how to be a lifelong learner, she's been to college multiple times, in fact, most recently, got out of nursing school just a couple years ago to become a licensed nurse practitioner. And so, you know, just that, before me, you know, going through the times that we had as a single mom when I was young, she really showed me how to do what I needed to do and was always there to support me and encourage me and, you know, to show me what it means to make, what rewards you get for making a positive impact on other people, and that's the greatest thing that I can be rewarded with. And, you know, I expect to give my best and nothing less to the Carter family.
Very nice. Good job. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce the assistant principal for Workman Junior High, Ms. Erica Prox. Erica attended Baylor University for Bachelor of Arts in Social Work, Texas A&amp;M University Commerce for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership, most recently, an assistant principal at Rankin Elementary, and has been an instructional coach at Nichols Junior High, has also been a lead teacher and academic specialist, a sixth-grade math, science, and English teacher, a fifth-grade math, science teacher, has been a corporate senior recruiter, and has worked in communities and schools as a campus manager. Erica, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, this is my opportunity, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I am honored to have been in this place twice now, so this is the second time here, and it is an honor to be here. My grandfather's words stand with me in his absence. He would tell me, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not to your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path." I stand firm on those words. This is my path. There are a few people who I would like to recognize for their support in my development into a servant leader. My grandparents, for providing me the foundation for me to grow. My parents, for the food which was essential in my development. My husband, Kenneth, who is here, for his love and his commitment and for always pushing me and-
Happy 23 years, Kenneth. Love you.
And to our daughters, Kendra and Kayla, and they are truly my reason for making this place a, this world a better place. As an educator, it is my mission to create a learning environment which fosters a desire for students and teachers to want to belong. I believe that my relationship development ability has created leaders in all areas, and I am thankful for that gift. I want to thank my educational family and friends. I am a Skyline High person. I am Joe Wilson. I am West Intermediate. I am Promener Middle School. I am Cedar Hill High School. I am Nichols Junior High. I am Rankin Elementary, and I know that some of you are here. I wanted to say thank you guys so much. You taught me that it's okay to give a hug, and that's kind of an inside joke. I didn't give hugs. So thank you for that. I am excited to add Workman Junior High to my path. Thank you, Ms. McLendon, for the opportunity. I am ready to continue the positive change that I bring to this world. Thank you again.
Next, the assistant principal for Sherrod Elementary, Ms. Kathy Smith. Kathy attended the University of Texas Tyler for Bachelor of Science in Health Professions, Concordia University for Master of Education in Ed Administration, most recently, an Early Learning Instructional Specialist in Dallas ISD, has been a campus instructional coach, a fourth-grade English Language Arts teacher, a kindergarten teacher, and a first-grade teacher, and has also taught pre-K. Kathy, congratulations. Welcome.
President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. This is an humbling experience for me. This is a new journey. The number eight, which is 2018, means new beginnings. This is a new beginning for me. I've served most of my career in Dallas ISD, but thank you for opening your arms and welcoming me into this new year for me, because this is a new year for me, a new beginning for me. I want to first thank Tracy Brown before her mentorship for opening up her arms and coaching me into leadership. Growth is mandatory. Growth is mandatory. Authenticity is mandatory. To my fearless leader, Dr. Michelle Cummings. I want to thank her for trusting me, for saying to me, "You have this. You have this." Even though I'm the red house, and she is the blue house, we humbly work together. And I want to thank the SHARQ leaders for opening up their arms, for welcoming me, to allowing me to be me, to put my arms around them, for accepting me for who I am, and I accepting them for who they are. And together, we serve our young people, we serve our children, we serve each other. Not only are they here, I am here to encourage them and support them as well, as well as they are here to support me, and I thank them for that. But to my reason why, she is here with me. Every morning, she asks me, "Mom, have a good day." She tells me, "Have a good day." Every evening, "Mom, how was your day at school? Was it a good day? Was it a bad day? How was it? How were the kids?" So to Reed Velar Smith, thank you for allowing me to be me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve other students and other children. So I just want to tell you, thank you. This means so much to me. It's an honor for me to serve, and that's all I have to say.
Last but certainly not least, the assistant principal for Sherrod Elementary, Ms. Tamara Tamara attended Texas A&amp;M University for Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, UT Arlington for Master of Social Work, most recently, a special education teacher at Spear Elementary, has been a teacher at Millwood, also has worked as a discharge coordinator in Millwood, has also been a substitute in Arlington ISD in the past, and is testing technician. Tamara, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, I am truly honored to be selected as the assistant principal at Sherrod Elementary. I would be remiss not to acknowledge God and His perfect plan, so that is my first and foremost. I would like to also acknowledge my family that is here with me. Thank you for always supporting me along the way. I would also like to acknowledge Rosa Orozco, my former principal, who has mentored me along the way and saw something in me that I didn't quite see myself. So to her, she is an amazing leader, and I appreciate everything that she did to support me through my journey. I would also like to acknowledge Spear Elementary, those of you that are here that has inspired me, as my former campus, inspired me and encouraged me along the way, and to my new Sherrod family, who's back there. They have welcomed me with a huge heartfelt welcome, and it has encouraged me and certainly comforted me in many ways. To my current president, sorry, my current principal, Ms. Allison Gilmore, who is a true example of servant leadership, and I really appreciate all the support that you've given me. Thank you for always encouraging me to take risks, and I appreciate and look forward to the work that we'll do at Sherrod Elementary. Thank you.
Are you sure that's it? For this meeting? We've got time. Well, congratulations sincerely to each and every one of you. Nothing but excellence here at Arlington ISD. Proud to have you all here for the new appointees, as well as those that were ratified this evening. I heard so many references to community and family- I, I heard so many references to community and family, servant leadership, serving the children, all bundled up into really great passion. That's, it's, it's a lot to have skills, but having that passion and that drive is really what resonates to our children, the, the unspoken principles that they pick up on, and I, I felt that in each and every one of you this evening. So, welcome to Arlington ISD on behalf of the board. As is our custom, I would like to ask you to follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby. Are we going to the lobby, Mr. Cale? Okay. And for, for an opportunity for us to congratulate you and, and welcome you, and if the audience, would you please indulge the board, allow us to go first so that we can come back in and, and continue on with our business while you all are having a great time elsewhere. Thank you. We'll adjourn, we'll be back at 7:45. Time is 7:54. Call this meeting back to order. The next item is a public hearing, which we have none, and open forum for agenda items. I don't see any cards, is that correct, Ms. Benjamin? So, we will continue on then to the next item, which is action items. Consider the appointment of individuals to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and the appointment of the committee chair, and I will turn that over to Mr. Hibbs.
Thank you, President Rice. Myself, Mr. Justin Chapa, and Ms. Melody Fowler comprised committee to look at the candidates. I want to thank them first and foremost, because I ran out of the country on them for 10 days, and we came back and had to jump into this and almost jumped through hoops to be able to find a time where we could all meet together. So, I do appreciate them working diligently, and to the rest of the board, I appreciate you receiving these, this information yesterday and being able to review the candidates yourselves. We had nine candidates, our applicants, one missed a, some of the criteria that, for serving on this committee and was disqualified, leaving us with eight applicants. The eight applicants that the committee reviewed, each one of you have in front of you, but Charles Brady, Daniel Kucherik, Darwin Doyle, Daniel Rankin, Ernest Cooper, Brock Klein, Shelley Freeman, and I would note that she is an employee. Those seven, we looked as candidates for placement with Michael McCrayne as our alternate. Mr. Will DeKine, who has served on the committee and will have one more year through 2019, served as last year's chair, and it is our recommendation that he continue in that spot. But I would leave it up to any board members if you have questions, otherwise this would be our recommendation from committee. And I would make the motion that is accepted.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept the committee's recommendation of the new appointees to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and the chair as named. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Walton. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. So, congratulations to those new members of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Congratulations to Mr. DeKine, and, and our gratitude for continuing on as the chair of that committee, and it really is an important, important task that we really are appreciative of as a board in overseeing the transparency of our bonded limitation, and I was-
I was just going to mention, President Rice, can I ask Ms. Cindy Powell, Ms. Powell, will your office reach out to these individuals? Thank you very much.
And I would also like to say thank you to Ms. Powell, as always, for keeping us on track in these regards, and Mr. Hibbs, Mr. Chapa, Ms. Fowler, thank you very much for your work on the committee as well. It's very, very important for us all. Very good, thank you. We will move on next to discussion action. The first item is the consideration of our Board of Trustees handbook, and I will turn that over to Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. We've talked about this and sent this to you all a couple of weeks. This is our board handbook that we do annual updates on. We actually did a big update in last, when did we do that?
Last year.
Last year. So, we, we made a lot of changes. There are not major changes in this one. You can see lots of new pictures. Other than that, it's pretty standard for what we did last year. This has been sent out to everyone, and this time, if there's any other considerations, we can discuss them for any tweaks and changes. Otherwise, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, very good. So, we, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Hogg and a second by Ms. Walton. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, then please vote. All right. Motion carries unanimously. We have an updated Board of Trustees handbook. Mr. Hogg, Ms. Walton, Mr. Chapa, thank you very much.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot to thank committee.
No, I appreciate the work and, and also that of Ms. Burdough and her guidance along that, with that document as well. Very good, thank you. All right. Next, discussion action item B, consider the 2018-19 District Improvement Plan goals. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening we'd like to discuss with the board and for your consideration, our district improvement plan goals. And you know, this is a, an important process as we cascade those goals down to the campus plans as well, so this really starts to drive the work, as, as finalize the work, I should say, as they are completing their campus plan. So, this evening, Dr. Wertz will provide an overview of that and share with us the progress on district goals.
Good evening, Dr. Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. I'm here this evening to share with you our proposed goals for the district improvement plan for this upcoming school year. The way I've organized the presentation is to articulate how it's connected back to our strategic plan, and then also share with you how each of the goals are connected specifically to the new accountability system and which goals will affect which parts. So, just as a reminder to the audience, that our district vision is to become a premier school district and a leader in education, and that our goal is singular, that 100% of our, our students actually graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career, or citizenship. And I think this goal is, is very specific. Most districts have multiple goals, and I think the idea that we have one singular goal that's unified for all students is something to celebrate. Our strategic plan helps us to articulate those things in four categories. We do that through academic achievement, college readiness, workforce readiness, and leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. And the work that we do within these things are aligned directly to the goals that I'm going to talk about tonight that are found in our district improvement plan. I thought I would just share a little bit about how these plans are related to one another, because when you're looking at a system who has a strategic plan, a district improvement plan, campus improvement plans, it often seems like there are multiple things happening at once, and so I wanted to just take a quick moment to show a slide that articulated how each of these were related to one another. The strategic plan that the board, that you all adopted, really directs all of our work. And so, the, our district improvement plan is specifically related towards our academic goals and how we can accomplish those things that are found as measure points within the strategic plan. Once the goals are adopted here at the district level, those cascade down to campus, the individual campuses. As you know, at the district level, we have no students, and so what happens is each of those campuses consider their own campus needs, the students' needs at their buildings, consider where the overall system goals are, and then align themselves to those goals, and then it's the performance of all of those different campuses in conjunction that bring us to our district outcomes. Once these goals are established at both the district and the campus levels, what we do is we design strategies to try and accomplish those goals. And one thing that I think is important to point out that we've been working really hard to try to accomplish is to identify very specifically, what are the strategies or the levers that we believe are most important to pull in order to affect change? And oftentimes, I believe you would find that campus improvement plans or district improvement plans are often seen as compliance documents, but that's not really what they're intended to do or what they're designed to do if they're done well. They're actually designed to serve as a monitoring tool to help you gauge your progress along the way. And so, the only way that that works is if the strategy that you actually choose, that you monitor the quality of the implementation, and if you monitor its impact on students as you're moving along, so you can make adjustments. And so, the last bullet on this slide specifically related to goals and strategies is probably the most important part of a plan. So, the district improvement plan is really part of the overall continuous improvement cycle, and I thought I would just spend a minute just to explain where each of those components of a continuous improvement cycle falls in the district improvement plan development. The first step is to conduct a needs assessment, and we do that to identify where the needs are so that we can establish goals and performance objectives. Once those are done, then we begin to identify which strategies we believe will be the most effective in helping us to reach those goals or those performance objectives. Once we implement the strategies, then we do quarterly progress checks along the way to identify whether those are in fact impacting student outcomes or whether we need to make adjustments in our plan. Tonight, I'm here to talk with you specifically about the very first step, which is around the goals themselves. When I come back again the next time, then I'll be able to, you'll have a copy in front of you of the actual strategies that we'll be implementing connected to each of those goals. The student accountability system in the state of Texas, as you know, has changed. There are now three domains. The first one is student achievement, the second one is directly around school progress, the third one is around closing the achievement gaps, and those, those, each of those, the, the data that are found within those domains make up the sum that gives you a letter grade. Campuses, as you know, this year did not receive a letter grade, they technically received either a MET standard or an improvement required rating. I thought I would spend a few minutes just reviewing the overarching ideas around the accountability system so that you would be able to see how they're connected specifically to our goals. Domain one is directly around student achievement. It measures the level of students' achievement, it's very similar to the old accountability system, it's basically how they do on STAR in, in this area, that's one way that it's measured. The, the difference between how the STAR is used in student achievement is that it now, instead of just passing or failing, you receive points for approaching standard, you receive points for meeting standard, or mastering. There are other components connected to student achievement that I'll talk about here briefly. Domain two is around school progress. This is basically connected into two parts, there's part A and part B. Part A is basically asking, did the students do better this year than they did last year? And part B is really looking at the district or campus performance relative to other districts or campuses that look similar to ours in terms of demographics. The last domain is closing the gaps, and basically what we're looking at in closing the gaps is here, we identify the, the various demographics and student groups that are here in the system, and we look to see if each of those different groups met the threshold that the state established. And as a district or a campus, you receive credit, either yes or no, either reach the threshold or you don't, and then the total number of yeses that you receive add up to, I'll give you a score that calculates domain three. This is, this is some of the data that's specifically connected, not data, but targets that are connected to domain three for closing the gaps. It's kind of small on the screen, as you can see, but those are the actual targets that were provided to us last year related to each of those individual categories. This is where Arlington ISD landed last year. You can see that in domain, domain one or student achievement domain, there was a score of 73. When it comes to identifying the total sum of the domain, or mean of the score, meaning the overall rating, what they do is they take the best of domain one or two, whichever score is the highest, and in our case, it was 80, and that makes up 70% of the total value, and then domain three makes up 30%, and those points are added together to give you your overall score, in our case, which was a 78. I thought it'd also be important, since we're operating under a new system, to look and see whether we've had any growth over the last year or not. If you were to take our data and plug it into the old system, you would see that we, the old index system where there was index one, two, three, and four, you can see that there were gains in three of the four indices. If you took this, last year's data and you dropped it into the new system and compared it to where we were this year with our current data, you would also see that we made gains specifically in the areas domain two B and domain three were our largest gain, which was projected around 10 points with the overall increase of three points. So, if this had been last year, we project we would have been at a 75, this year, we would have been at a 78. I point that out only to articulate that while there's still lots of room to grow, the trajectory is positive. I want to spend a few minutes talking a little bit about what we've understood the data to mean. So, the very first sample or a step in the continuous improvement cycle is analyzing, understanding our data. And we have done that and tried to figure out like, what, what is our data actually telling us? And the first thing that we know is that it's, the solution to raising achievement in terms of this accountability system is complex, it's not simplistic, it's actually multifaceted. One of the things that I mentioned earlier around student achievement domain is it actually consists of multiple facets, which I'm going to describe here in a few minutes, which includes STAR scores, CCMRs, which are around college, career, and military readiness, and then also graduation rates. You could actually raise the results of every one of our four IR schools to a MET standard, and it would still not result in a B in Arlington ISD. The solution to raising the scores to a B is actually quite, quite complex, and it's more, it's, it, the solution lies outside of just STAR scores or even the combination of those at these schools. IR schools in Arlington right now are all at the elementary level, and so their contribution to the student achievement portion of the district score really lies in this one area of STAR, which only makes up 40% of that one domain. What we have noticed is that the variance in student achievement actually exists across the schools. So, if you were to look at student groups in schools that you would have technically coded if they had received a grade as an A, a B, a C, or a D, you're going to see that there's variance even amongst those. And so, the solution around STAR achievement is not just about passing, because passing used to be, if you approached, you passed. The variance that exists has to actually be addressed in the A schools, the B schools, the C schools, the D schools. So, in order to raise that portion of our achievement, we have to get down to which, which classrooms are struggling, and how do we support the teachers in those classrooms? And they actually exist not just in the Ds and F schools, so to speak, or the schools that would have been scored in that area, but they sit in the A schools, the B schools, and the C schools. You could in fact, back to the original question, you could in fact raise all the Ds and F schools up, and that wouldn't solve the problem, it actually has to be solved through multiple facets. The other point that I would like to make too is that the district-wide improvement is only achievable if you actually look at all these points together that I'm going to talk about, and I wanted to give you a quick example. This is an example of comparison of how it would look if you changed how- This is an example of comparison of how it would look if you changed how kids are performing at the different levels. So as I mentioned earlier, you receive points for approaching, you receive points for meeting, and you receive points for mastering. The current, or the last, in the last system, the passing standard was approaches. So any student who approached standard was considered passing STAR, and that's what they call passing. If you had a hundred percent of the students passed STAR in Arlington, for example, but none of them were at the meets level or the masters level, even with a hundred percent of students passing STAR, you would still be sitting at a composite scale score fifty-eight, that you would still have an F. If you had a hundred percent passing and thirty percent of the students getting the meets level and ten percent mastering, you'd be sitting at a seventy-five. And if you had a hundred percent passing at approaches and fifty percent at meets and thirty percent at masters, then you're at a ninety. And I only articulate this one slide just to show the complexity of how students are performing, how we have to monitor and ensure that kids are growing in their achievement. Because passing, what used to be passing as approaches is no longer going to be, is no longer going to solve any achievement issues. It has to be beyond that, and that is an adjustment that the state made this school year. I also wanted to share with you a little bit about how the student achievement domain is actually made up. So the student achievement domain actually consists of multiple areas. There is the STAR area, which for elementary schools is one hundred percent of how that student domain is actually calculated. At the high schools and at the district level, it's made up of STAR, CCMRs, and graduation rate. For today's conversation, I just want to focus specifically on the district level. And you'll notice that forty percent is STAR, forty percent is CCMRs, and forty, and twenty percent is graduation rate. And I want to highlight to the right, you'll notice the denominator. So in the STAR category, we have about ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-three tests that are actually taken. Those tests each create a data point. For every student that approaches, that receives an approaching score, that's a data point. For everyone that receives a meet, that's another data point, and everyone that receives a masters is another data point. So in essence, if you're looking at the total number of data points that actually make up the forty percent of STAR, that denominator really hovers somewhere between two-hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand data points. Those, that's the denominator for the forty percent. For college, career, and military readiness, the total number of data points that's calculated is based on the graduates, and it's four thousand, seventy-five. So for the same amount of weight that makes up a district rating, CCMRs only has four thousand in the denominator versus STAR, which is close to two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand. And so as you kind of try to approach, how do you make a dent in trying to figure out what are your best strategies to not only improve as a district, but also where your highest levers are going to be? You have to consider the fact that the value of one data point, even in the CCMRs, has a lot of weight compared to the two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand that are connected specifically to STAR. And then, of course, the graduation rate has four thousand, two hundred and one. So in the student achievement domain, the way that it's calculated, as I mentioned earlier, is it takes each of these approaches, meets, and masters, and then divides them by three, and then you receive a rating. And so in our, in our district, we are proposing the following goals that are connected to the content areas, the major content areas that we teach in academic achievement that we measure. So for reading, our goal is to move from forty-three to forty-eight. For math, from forty-seven to fifty-one. In writing, thirty-eight to forty-three. Science, from forty-eight to fifty-two. And social studies, from fifty-two to fifty-six. In student achievement domain, as I mentioned earlier, these are the different criteria that are actually calculated as part of the CCMRs. As you can see, there are a variety. The thing that's important to note about a CCMR is you either have one or you don't as a student. So it doesn't really matter if you have three or four of these things. The important thing is that we want all students to at least achieve one of them. And so you try to create a menu of opportunities for students to have access to a variety of programs and opportunities. And if they acquire one of these, then they, then they meet or they receive credit for it. You receive one point is given to every graduate who accomplishes any one of them, as I mentioned earlier, except for the concurrent sequence of courses that's actually coming up next year. And then you have one, you get one, well, actually you get one-half point for each of those concurrent sequence of courses based on the coursework that's attached to the approved industry list. In Arlington ISD, we currently have thirty-eight courses where we receive, where we offer industry certifications. Seventeen of those are actually on the list. This is actually a point of a lot of feedback that TEA is currently receiving, because many districts like Arlington offer a variety of industry certs that our kids can actually participate in. However, only seventeen of ours, for example, are on the list. And so even if they pass other exams, there's no credit awarded for those on our current accountability system. And so TEA is looking at that list right now. We also look at the high school graduation rates, and basically, yes.
Just one clarification with that. The cosmetology is currently on the list, but that's what they're looking at removing.
So right now, I actually, interesting you bring that up. So right now, cosmetology is on the list, the operator license is on the list. I was at a meeting today at Region Eleven. It, this is not official word, but the word that I received was that right now TEA is planning on leaving it on the list.
Oh, good.
They've received a lot of feedback on that. It's not official, but it's lots of feedback.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. When it comes to the high school graduation, there's the four-year, five-year, or the six-year longitudinal graduation rate. It's the best of whichever those are. And then that, that rate is actually, you get twenty percent of your weight based on that. So our college readiness goals, which are attached to that portion of the accountability system, are really around two areas. Our LEP student population, so our limited English proficient students graduating, we would increase from seventy-four to seventy-seven percent. And our special education students graduating will increase from seventy-three to eighty percent. One point that I do want to mention within connection to our CCMR data, it always lags the year behind. So it's based on two thousand and eighteen graduates. And so right now, the focus of our work is really about making sure that we've captured all the data that's connected to the kids that just graduated in June and August, identify if there are any more opportunities for any of those students who could have received an opportunity to connect to one of these data points that they didn't. And that data will be finalized pretty much in October, and that is what actually comes to, into accountability for this school year. Another goal for college readiness is that all ASD students graduating will complete one of the following. So either six semester credit hours for dual credit, pass AP coursework with a three, or IB with a four, and that the, the sum of all of those together would increase from forty-seven to fifty-one. We also have some goals around workforce readiness. One is connected to CTE coherent sequence of courses, which increases from thirty-eight to thirty-nine. And then also our workforce certification exams, we would like to go from sixty-nine to eighty-nine. And I want to highlight that one for a second, because you probably noticed, wow, that's a big jump going twenty points. Our traditionally, we have hovered around eighty-nine. We've been doing some, some deep analysis to identify what, what we believe happened and why we dropped this year. So we decided to leave it at eighty-nine after a long discussion, because we believe the things that are being put in place this year will actually bring us back to our norm, which is pretty typical around the upper eighties. So we intend to try to get right back there. With leadership, citizenship, and responsibility, our goal is to decrease the number of students who are being placed in a discretionary DAP from two-point-eight percent to two-point-six percent. Now, while tonight is really just about goals, and when you, when you adopt the recommendation, if you choose to do so, it'll be around the goals, I thought I would share with you a little bit about some of the things we're thinking about in terms of strategies. Our goal, when it comes to strategies, is identifying specifically what levers we need to pull in order to affect change, to reach our ultimate goal is to increase ourselves in the accountability system. And one is one that I mentioned earlier, which is to address the variance that we know is, that exists within the classrooms across the district. We have an awesome data system here in Arlington that allows us to see how students are achieving not only individually as kids, but also which classrooms are experiencing success, which schools are having success, where we can replicate that success, and also where support is needed. And so we intend to monitor those classrooms closely and identify differentiated support and professional learning for those areas where need exists. We also plan on implementing some new systems and tools that will help us monitor students' progress with smaller increments of time. One of the things you've often heard me talk about is the role of assessments or the role of even gathering data along the way when it comes to student learning. It's, I always equate it kind of, kind, very similarly to getting into a car and just kind of hitting the gas without having a map. The data tells you where you need to start and when you, when you've reached your destination. And if we can put protocols and tools in place that allow teachers to make those choices with smaller increments of time, they won't have to reach back and try to teach things that they actually now are identifying months later that students struggle with. And so inside our curriculum documents, we have already printed for everybody, they've actually been there for as long as we've written the new ones. Every bundle, which, which every unit consists of multiple bundles, have assessments that are already in there for teachers to use at their own discretion. We do that as a tool so that we know that those assessments are aligned to the standard and the level of rigor that the standards have. And also it allows them to get a real sense whether students are mastering the content. What we're doing is we're collapsing those into summative assessments. So we're literally extracting them from the curriculum documents that the teachers already have and collapsing them into a summative assessment that then they can then use. Right now, they have these individual items that are part of each of the bundles. We're collapsing them so at the end, those same, they're still accessible in bundles, but we're also going to provide them in the form of a summative at the end so that teachers can leverage that data at the end of teaching a unit to know whether their kids got it or not, and if they need to swing back around and reteach before they keep moving on to other units. The other, the other thing that we're going to, the other strategy that we're implementing in connection to that is not just provide the tool, but then how do you provide the training so that people are using the tool in a way that's going to affect their classroom instruction? So we will be putting into place more support around PLCs, the protocols that teachers are using in their PLCs with their, with their campus leadership, so they can leverage the data they're gathering from these assessments that they teach to drive their decision-making in terms of how to adjust their instruction and how to plan as they move forward. The other thing that we're working on is, now that we know what the state is monitoring in terms of college, career, and military readiness, we're working as a team to design a system for us to monitor how we're doing in terms of meeting the thresholds or the data sets that are actually required as part of CCMRs in a routine basis, at least quarterly over the course of the year. Right now, every time we take CAs or do benchmarks, we run our data just to get a sense of how school, how the schools and the district are doing along the way. We are going to, we are in the process of designing a system that allows us to do the same thing around CCMRs. The value of the CCMRs and how they affect the district outcomes is equal to the way they work when it comes to STAR and district rating. And so we're going to design a system that allows us to monitor that more closely. We also are working in collaboration with other departments to make sure we're identifying students who have needs and that they're receiving the supports that they have, that are needed. Students that may be coming from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, who may need additional supports. We're being very proactive identifying who those students are so that they can have those supports. We've also continued to put and revamped our formal mentor program for new principals. The Office of School Leadership has a really structured system in place where principal mentors were actually certified at the national level, and they are working with all new incoming principals in terms of their first year of onboarding so that the right systems and things are being put in place to help them be successful. And then finally, we are working, and we've been doing this actually since the spring, to really try to improve the quality of the campus improvement plans and the district improvement plans by making sure that they are, the strategies are actually truly aligned to the performance objectives in a way that's going to allow us to see change. Our, as we analyze our data, we recognize this to be a big need. And we saw this actually in the spring, which is why we started the process in the springtime. One of the things that we're working really closely is for people that, for all of us, and for those who are the individuals who are designing their own plans, to understand the relationship between the strategy that they're actually implementing and how that will or will not affect the outcomes that they're looking for. And then specifically identifying how they will monitor the implementation of that strategy along the way. So when they're doing their quarterly reviews, they can make a judgment call as to whether it's going well or not, and also whether the strategy is in fact impacting achievement or if it isn't. The last thing I wanted to share with you is we have recently redesigned the, and created a strategic support network for schools who are IR or schools who are needing additional support. This is housed out of the Office of School Leadership. Tracy Brown is the area superintendent that leads the strategic support network. It consists of less schools, so there are about eight schools in this network. And these schools receive focused and aligned school support. It allows us to design a district-wide system that, that helps schools to put the continuous improvement process in place that's actually being recommended by the state, which they call the Texas Accountability Intervention System or the TACE process. And this, this process will be, have some continuity across the system, because it'll be implemented with one area superintendent overseeing it for all of these schools. Also, it'll allow Ms. Brown to provide targeted professional learning and executive coaching to the principals based on their needs, because there's fewer schools and they're all able to collaborate with one another. It also, in the past, we used to have DCSIs, which are the District Coordinator for School Improvement. Each area who had either an IR campus in their area served as the DCSI. We now have collapsed that into one area, so we have a singular DCSI, which allows for us to have more streamlined communication with TEA, because only one individual is having the conversation with, with the agency rather than four. And finally, it allows for one office to coordinate all the professional service providers. So if you are an IR school, the law requires that you have what we call a PSP. We, that's not uncommon, and we've been, we've had PSPs for some time, and most districts have some. This will allow us to have one contact point working with all PSPs rather than four. So it's our hope that as we work on these systems, that we'll continue to see growth and improvement. When we receive the actual district improvement plan in its entirety, along with the CIPs, you'll see specific strategies that are developed to address the goals around each of the content areas and all of the other college readiness and workforce readiness goals that are not generalized like I described tonight in terms of systems, but specifically connected to like the professional learning that we'll be providing and the support at each of the campuses. Questions?
Thank you very much for, for the information. I'm sure we'll have, have some questions from, from my colleagues here. I'll wait just a moment, see if lights light up, and then I'll start to ask a question at which point I'm sure the lights will light up and I'll be shut down. So in, in waiting for that, first off, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the information, the, the approach and the layout. I personally appreciate the time and attention that you've paid to it. The showing us where we were last year to this year, had the same standards been applied, I think it's, it's useful for us to be able to see that. And also the information on the, the complexity of the system and the process as far as it's not just these simple little levers to make us go from a seventy-eight to an eighty. Certainly something we still have to look at, but I appreciate that explanation as well. I do have questions, but Ms. Walton has requested to speak, so I will defer to her. Please, Ms. Walton.
I thought you said we could ask questions.
Yes, yes.
I just have a couple, Dr. Wertz. Thank you very much. This was very interesting information. Helps understand, it's still, this is just a comment, it's still quite daunting to think that most of our schools, which are elementaries, have one shot at a score, and that's the STAR test. And that's just putting too many eggs in one basket, you know? It's just, it's not right. Did you say, I think I heard you say on the slides on page eight, that we've got to look at individual classes in all schools, not just, oh, just, the schools that were low-performing?
Yes.
How are you going to do that?
So we actually have a pretty robust data system that Dr. Barlow and his team have designed that allow us to look at the district level, at the campus level, down to the individual classroom. So you can look at a fourth grade class, a fourth grade band, I'll just give you an example, at any elementary school, and then look and see what the performance was in each of those classrooms as a class, and then you can drill down to the student. So what we'll do is we will look where variance exists. If, for example, and this happens at any school, we, there are, and there's lots of reasons why some classrooms do, do perform better than others. We know some things are things that people can control, and some things are things you can't. Kids come with readiness, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes you are an experienced teacher, and sometimes you're brand-new and you're learning the ropes. So what we want to figure out is where that variance exists, so we know what kind of support to provide. And so what we'll do is we will look at campuses and then look at each of their classrooms and their grade-level bands and see, are they all performing pretty similar to each other? Is there an outlier? If there's an outlier, we want to investigate why that's occurring. The other thing that we can figure out and look at is at schools. So we can So, we can, in the system, look and say, with all things alike, meaning with the variables that you all have in common from one school to the next or classroom to classroom, where is there achievement happening and where is effective instruction occurring, and when, where does it look like there might need to be support? Even though we're at different schools, theoretically, the idea is if the makeup of the student population is very similar in two places, even in two different schools, theoretically, if there are right supports to put in place, they should be able to provide in similar ways. I say that recognizing and acknowledging the fact that the nuance of each individual person is different, all of us learn different, we're not talking about cookie cutter things, but in terms of looking at data, you can begin to isolate variables to identify where there is effectiveness happening and where there's gaps. And so what we'll be able to do is look and figure out where those gaps exist so that we can target our support in those places where it's needed. You know, as well as all of us, that in a district this size, there is finite amount of resources in terms of human capital. If I had my way and I had a wand I could wave, I would hire an instructional coach that I could attach to every teacher in the district, but there's no funding in any part of this country that would afford that. But what we can do is say, which teachers are actually the ones who need the greatest level of support? Where are the master teachers that can help teachers that are actually still learning? And then strategically target where we send those places so we can maximize our resources and provide support where it's needed. So that's really the essence of what we're trying to accomplish with our data.
Okay. I am concerned with the CCMR deal where our indicators, where our certifications, that the state's only recognizing 17 of those. I mean, other than politically with our program, you know, our legislative agenda and so forth, is there anything else that can be done to convince the state to look at more than 17?
The states, the TA, TA is actually receiving quite a bit of feedback about this. Our scenario is not unique. As I was mentioning earlier, I was at Region 11 this morning, it was comforting at least, not necessarily great, but it was comforting to sit in a room and recognize that every, all these, all these schools in the Region 11, districts of Region 11, were actually having questions and challenges around the same things that we are. So it's actually a statewide issue. We will provide and do provide our feedback along with all the other districts. I think TA is recognizing that there's a gap there. What they're going to do about that, it's hard to predict, but we make sure our voice is known.
Yeah, or how long it's going to take them to do it, yeah, in time to help anybody graduating soon. Yeah, sure.
Sorry, I'm throwing off your microphone.
It's all right. We'll get it working.
Sorry.
Go right ahead.
It's not even going to be that great of a comment.
It better be.
Ms. Walton, it's a very good point, and I think it can't go without more action on that. We need to make sure, as we're going to vote on late August, August, October, November, our official legislative agenda coming up again, we need to make sure we have that. Mr. Powell, I know, is you're back there and you helped with our, build our legislative agenda. And Dr. Wertz, I think any of our certifications that aren't on that list or anything that we think we're going to add in the future, we need to provide that list on our back sheet where we provide unfunded mandates and those type of things to let the legislators know, to really push that as one of our key legislative actions, along with fixing the employee interns. But that's a whole other situation. I can't ever get off that tangent.
Would it take a legislative action to increase these?
I think it's more TA, but I do think legislators, they've meddled enough. We all know legislators can meddle enough that sometimes that message then gets delivered to TA and the political game starts of how things are enacted. So, if there's enough meddling from legislators, it's amazing what one of those phone calls to TA can help influence on some of those. So I definitely think it needs to be a focus of ours.
Let's get our people, yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Walton.
And just my last question, I believe I understand that we now have a, one area superintendent, Tracy Brown, who is overseeing our IR schools and those that are kind of on the bubble or some indicators that more support is needed. Could I, could you send me that list, you know, just email it to me?
Happy to do that.
Appreciate it, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Yeah, points well made. The legislative pressure will absolutely come in handy, and this is a question actually for you, Mr. Hogg, in relation to that, and I'll put your mic back on. Yeah, I know. Believe me, I know. So.
I'm under the weather, you never know what I may say tonight.
We can certainly garner support from other school board trustees surrounding districts to put those pressure points on legislators. Is TESB doing anything in their?
I don't know. We usually hear from Commissioner Morath constantly from TA, so it'll definitely be a definite item I bring up next time I see Commissioner Morath, which should be next week. So, bringing that up to the TA commissioner, I'm sure he's hearing it, he can't hear it enough.
So it'd be helpful for you to have that list in hand when you meet with him next week.
I think it's a great idea, if we have that list pretty soon, I think it'd be great as we go down next week to have that, yeah.
Good. Thank you. Let's see, I have, I don't see, are there other trustees with questions at this point? I don't see any, and this is a discussion action item, so I know district is looking for direction if possible this evening. I have a couple, a couple of questions on the, like the DIP goal one for academic achievement, the different increases, 43 to 48, 47, 51, et cetera. And this really carries across the whole spectrum for all the goals. I know some did not exist the year before because of the changing in the structure and the system. Some of these are similar or the same indicators as what we had the year before. So, from 43 to 48, for that first, the STAR EOC reading component, do you have the information to show us what our trend is, so the year before that?
I could get that to you. The way these goals are actually written is based upon the sum of the approaches, meets, and masters. Whereas before it was approaches you met and then you did.
Right.
So, when we, yeah, I can, I could ask the team to break it down for you, but these numbers are, they combine what we need.
That's, that's fine, and that's what I, I kind of thought, I thought those might have similarities. I know the others are completely different all over the place. Okay. Let's see, I had a, I think one more question here. On the district improvement plan, goal three, workforce readiness, the increase on CTE coherent sequence of courses increased from 38 to 39 percent. Are we essentially already there as a result of our CTC being at max capacity compared to last year? Have we kind of maybe already hit that, or is that still a growth target?
It's still a growth target.
It is? Okay, okay.
It's the sequence.
Okay.
It's what, it's which courses the kids are taking in a sequence. It's not necessarily the course.
Right, okay. All right. Okay, so that, that's really all the questions that I have at this time, and I, without seeing anything from my colleagues, I would move to approve these goals at this point in time. All right, so there's a motion by myself, a second by Mr. Hibbs. Is there any discussion on that? All right, then.
All right, thank you.
Excellent, motion carries. You've got plan goals. Thank you very much for the presentation, the information. We look forward to upward trajectory, continued upward trajectory. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, the next item, we're moving towards consent, items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any trustees that have items that they wish to withdraw, consider separately? Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Rice. Yes, I would appreciate it if we could withdraw and consider separately consent item B, class size waiver request.
Okay, noted. Ms. Fowler?
And I'll second that.
Oh, you don't have to second that, that's okay. But I appreciate the support. Okay, all right, so we have one item. Are there any other items that trustees wish to consider separately? All right. So then, moving on, we do have some bids on the consent agenda. Ms. Powell, you care to share?
I do care to share. Dr. Rush, board members, Dr. Cavasos, good evening. We have two bids on the agenda this evening. In both cases, we're recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Very good. Thank you. All right, I'm willing to entertain a motion on consent. Mr. Chapa?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as modified by Ms. Polly Walton's request.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Mr. Hibbs to approve consent, excluding item B, consider a class size waiver request. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please vote. Consent passes. All right, now we'll move on to the separate item, the class size waiver request. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. If you'll help me procedurally, do I make a motion or do we just talk about it or?
You should probably describe a little bit of why you're considering it separately, and then we'll have a little bit of questions, discussion, and then we can move forward from there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that help. This is the first time this district, I believe, has ever considered getting a 22 to one for our kindergarten through fourth grade waiver for class size. I could be wrong, you could correct me, but, and I just, I feel like it's the wrong move. To save thousands of, thousands of dollars is so tempting when our budget is as tight as it is, but this summer at our TESB leadership training, we had special sessions and all kinds of things. TA and the commissioner, Mike Morath, have really charged, and it really has come home to me, that as a school board member, we're all under, under the charge to understand and fix our lagging student performance. And to incentivize all of us, we now have the A to F report card, so that's pretty high motivation to do something about student performance and to internalize that as a school board member. And when our district, you know, got the score it got, it just broke my heart. So, I am so glad we have Dr. Wertz and this wonderful goal setting that we just approved to try to do something about it, but I think that allowing these waivers to go through for these 11 classes, kindergarten through fourth grade, is just counter to that. We're trying to close the gap for our LEP students. We tried to do that this past year, didn't work out very well, we didn't meet our goal. We tried to increase the percentage of all K through two students that passed the ISIP, that didn't happen. We've got four schools, elementaries, rated, improvement required, and not met standards. And we all agree that these areas must be improved, but I can't see where waivers is going to help us with that. Yes, it would help our budget, but we're adding, we're doing other things with our money to counter this slide and to try to bring our achievement levels up to what they need to be. And it seems like if we can add money for executive coaches and district coordinators for school improvement and, you know, these other very worthwhile things, it just seems like why we're not adding teachers, a few classroom teachers to meet the 22 to one ratio just seems to be counter to what we're spending other money on. Does that make any sense? I mean, it's kind of a pound, what is it, a penny wise and a pound foolish. But again, it's really hard to not want to recapture thousands and thousands of dollars by not adding teachers. Research shows that that teacher is the one most important school-based factor for a student's success. And we all know in our hearts that if that little kindergarten student or that little pre-Ker or that little first grader gets a good start, that the chances of them having success is greater than if they don't have a good start with that first year. It's our kindergarten, those people, and this district is focused on that. I mean, that's one of our focuses, is to improve things for kindergarten through second grade. Doing these waivers is just, it just doesn't seem to work in that, in that whole idea. We've all seen students that struggle. They fail, they're defeated, they become discipline problems, and it's just, it's pretty difficult. And it's really hard when you see five-year-olds and six-year-olds that are in that boat and just seeing nothing but defeat and failure at every turn. And I just believe, back to what I said, that that research says that teachers are the most important factor in that student's success. And we need to have every, you know, the lowest possible enrollment we possibly can to hopefully provide the opportunity for all of those kids. You know, just give them all a better chance at success. I know it's not 100%, but let's, you know, waivers is just not the answer in my book. If we add one more teacher to get to compliance, because that's the issue, we're out of compliance with some classes that have 23 in them, but if we add one more teacher to become compliant in two, three, five, five of these schools, the student-teacher ratio is still going to be around 18 students to one because there's, you know, it affects the whole grade level. Some might see that this is only 11 classrooms. No, it's not 11 classrooms, it's that whole grade level, it's that whole building. And when Dr. Wertz tells us that we can't just look at who's failing now to throw all of our goodies at, that they can be anywhere, and we've got to watch the data carefully and, you know. Dr. Barlow is working very hard to understand all the data so we can pinpoint it and get to it. It just seems that spending a little bit more money, not doing these waivers, becoming compliant with the 22 to one in most of these, most of these 11 schools is just what I think we ought to see happen. So that's my piece.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thanks, Ms. Walton, for your comments. I don't think it's all doom and gloom, Ms. Walton, and I think you're looking at it from one standpoint is where you're looking at, and I think everyone up here would agree the teachers are the most important thing. There's no doubt, if, ands, and buts about that. Is it a large savings yet? Dr. Cavasos, what is it, 6, what's the projected savings?
600,000.
Right. So much that I don't even know exactly what it is, right? That's not the whole reasoning behind this. I look at this from the standpoint of, and you didn't mention, just another element, teachers will receive a stipend for having this, so having that to take over those classrooms. I look at this from the factor of what does it do to that entire classroom? As staff has told us previously on this, this really makes an impact of some classrooms and some of these schools do not want another class separated because now you're six weeks into a semester, you're bringing in a full-time sub for who knows how long, and we'll get into the hiring of a teacher, which in my element is the biggest obstacle to not doing a class size waiver for doing that. But you get into then a full-time sub, you're then splitting up the kids right now, and we're talking about, you know, 22 to 23 in almost all these cases, almost every single one. It's not the case, do I wish all of our classes... It's not the case, do I wish all of our classes were 18? Yeah, I'm with you, Ms. Walton. I fully agree with that 100%. I think we all agree with that. Not a single IR school is on this list. Staff made sure to put that, and this is not an across-the-board waiver. This is not, Dr. Cavassos, I'm correct, this is not every school that could have a waiver.
Absolutely. No, it's very mindful as to which ones are eligible.
So staff came back with a recommendation of a very targeted approach of certain schools to have that. Not a single IR, waivers held. You talk about some of the other hirings, we did ask staff to come back with savings, but that's a, I think savings is a moot point on this. You're hiring a full-time sub. I think we've passed over the issue also of our surplus numbers. When we get too many students, when we don't have the numbers and they don't meet, teachers are moved, and it's usually week 2 or 3, if I'm correct, sometime right after Labor Day, a week or 2 right after Labor Day, they've moved. I've had a wife who's been surplused, let me tell you. The crying that occurs that night and the driving around saying, here's the schools you might be going to, right? And it is a miserable experience. So I commend our HR staff, because that number's been up in the 80s to the hundreds before. And we have 4,500 teachers, and the last 2 years, we've been in the 30s. And I think this year, we're in the low 30s, is that right, Mr. Strand? I'm looking out there. That makes a big difference. It creates consistency with those students and those teachers. And I think we can't look at this from just a 1-year standpoint. You have to look at this of, and I talked to Dr. Cavassos, staff is tracking future years, what's happening, because then you bring in 4 teachers this year, and it should only be, it was only 3, they just went over 1. Well, they know next year's class may not hit that 4. Well, then all of a sudden, that new teacher that just got brought over or just hired is now surplused and being moved again to that process. And that's not a good consistency. We all up here have talked about trying to reduce our surplus numbers of teachers. I think that is a critical factor. But then I think the point that gets to me is the biggest point, because there's nothing more important than the quality teachers we hire. We talk about high-quality teachers. Our staff has done a great job in the past where we can start making offers in the spring before teachers are even fully, we know there's going to be openings. That's a financial risk we take to say, we're going to make this offer, because we think we're going to have some openings, and we know principals want to jump on that and hire really quick and get to that. I hate to say it, this time of the year, you've got to be nervous about who you're hiring. And you're either hiring sometimes that brand-new teacher, which can be great, and we can find some good teachers, we've done it in the past. And I'm not saying anyone who gets hired this time of the year is not, but it is a, you're not, it's not the hiring season. It's not a hiring season for teachers. Dr. Cavassos, do we let other teachers out of their contracts?
No.
No. Well, I mean, we don't, unless they're moving, unless there's a
Family situation.
Stinuating circumstance, we don't normally let them out of their contracts, especially not to go teach at a Grand Prairie, to teach at a Fort Worth, or teach at those other places. So I worry about what happens on that consistency of those quality teachers, because then that's not a 1-year decision. That's a multiple-year decision that we're making on that teacher we hire. Because once you hire someone, we like to say, welcome to the family, welcome to the ISD, you heard us talk to all these principals and staff, some that have been here over 20-plus years. That's my biggest concern over what happens is who we're hiring, the quality of the teacher, creating that consistency for the classroom. And I think it is, it does create that on a targeted approach. It should never be a district-wide fix. It should never be a part, but it is a part-time. We are one of the few districts that doesn't do this, and we haven't done it for a long time. But I think it is the right move, and I commend staff for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Raj. I'd like to just, I guess, I will end with a motion, but I'll start with my thoughts on this. This is a tough call for me. I have long been a proponent of lowering class sizes, but also recognizing that the level by which we would need to reduce class sizes, the research shows that that level is so significant. You know, none of the proposed class waiver changes, if we didn't make them here, would achieve those levels. And I think that that's also important to note. The other thing, and Mr. Hogg alluded to this, and I wanted to draw it out even more, is I think what the administration has done, it's not only targeted, it's, I think it's very, it's very, very limited. There are 11 campuses that are on this list. We are not asking for campus, staff is not asking for a campus-wide waiver. And for 7 of these 11 schools, and I'm looking at the statistics that we were provided, for 7 of these 11 schools, the waiver is for 1 student for the entire grade. And so I think, you know, we, you know, not to, I don't think this is a money decision in full, but I think it's something we have to be cognizant about. We have been sitting through budget presentations where we're looking at a $31, $32 million deficit, and we've talked at our work session a few weeks ago that without help coming in the future with these projected deficits only growing, and on the understanding that staff has been very efficient and very cognizant of the situation that we are in, and trying to prioritize instructional opportunities for our students, we're running out of low-hanging fruit. And so this is a tough call, but when we're talking about for 7 of the 11 campuses, 1 student, I don't think that we can justify incurring those costs when it could be, because several of these campuses also have higher, I think, I believe, higher-than-average mobility rates, it could be that we make this change, and a few weeks from now, that 1 student or 1 student from the class that requires a class waiver right now leaves, and we've made a very disruptive change, not only from the teacher's standpoint, but from the student's standpoint. And I want to focus just a moment on the student experience. The research is very clear that the more disruptive a student's academic experience is in terms of transitions, not only between campuses, but even within a single campus between classes, is usually pretty negative experience for the student, depending, especially depending on what situation they might be coming from. And so Ms. Walton mentioned, you know, we have situations where people are having a good start. Well, we may have students in many of these campuses that are off to a great school year. They're clicking with their teacher, they're clicking with their friends and their class, and then we're going to have to split those classes up. And while that would achieve a lower class size, when we're talking about 1 student in an entire grade being over, but then in some of these campuses we're looking at, you know, we're talking about 5 classes in a grade at one of these campuses, all having to be broke up to make a 6th class. I think from the student experience, I would be very hesitant to force our students in those campuses to undergo that experience. And I also want to hit on the fact that, you know, as a former teacher, I do appreciate that, I think that this proposal, although novel for this district, and certainly would, you know, teachers want fewer students in their classes so they can have more time for individualized instruction, I do think that this is about as respectful of teachers as we can get here. Our understanding is that the campuses that this is going to be rolled out at, there has been buy-in from the very specific teachers who are going to be accepting these wa, you know, with the classes where these waivers will be implemented, they will receive a stipend each month. We have a commitment from the administration that if at any point the class waiver is no longer needed for that class, the teacher will still receive the waiver for the entire month, even if it's only for 1 day that there are over 22 students. And so I think that that's very respectful. No one is being forced to go into this situation. It's a hard decision for all of us to make, and given the very limited impact that I think that this will have on day-to-day experience in the classrooms, given the limited number of students involved, I think it's something that we should support. And I will end by formally making the motion to approve the class size waiver request.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Chapa. So we have a motion to approve the class size waiver by Mr. Chapa, second by Mr. Hogg, and there are additional lights for continued discussion. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Well, I will just urge you to vote no on that motion to answer a few of the points. I'm not looking at this from the teacher's point of view, although that's really hard for me, because I see that point of view. I'm looking at it from the child's point of view, and yes, it is disruptive to move kids around, it's happened many, many times, and their, kids are pretty resilient to those kinds of things. And, you know, I think they will be okay with that, and the end result will help make things better for them. We don't know if some of these schools, are any of these schools on the, what is it, Strategic Support Network? Well, that's good news. On the surplus of, surplusing teachers, did we not hire 300 new teachers this year?
Approximately.
So, you know, there's some attrition there for some of these people who we might hire instead of doing the waiver. There's some room there for them to find a job through attrition of other people retiring or moving. The other point, I do have great faith in our HR department to find highly qualified teachers any time of the year, anytime we need them. I'm told always that we have many candidates wanting to work here in Arlington, so I have a hard time believing that our HR office would do anything else if they were asked. And just lastly, I taught kindergarten for 8 or 9 years, back in the 80s, when there were more beaver cleavers in the classroom than there are today. And I'll never forget, Mr. Kaals, who this building is named for, came in. We were doing half-day at that point, and I had 33 in my morning class, and he took one look around that room with all these busy little kids and said, we've got to get another teacher in here. So I know what the difference is between having just lots and lots of kiddos, and today's situation with our classes, 23 could probably look like 33 did back in the 80s. So, and yeah, we had to bust the kids up, and they didn't all get to stay with me, but they got to go with Ms. Day, and they loved her within minutes. So it can work out, is what I'm saying. So I just urge you to vote no on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hibbs?
Oops. I thought I just...
There you go.
Thank you, President Raj, and I appreciate the comments by my fellow board members, and I hear the comments from each. And absolutely, Ms. Walton, I hear your heart, being a former kindergarten teacher, a champion of teachers like none other. And I also respect the opinions that I hear from Mr. Hogg and what I was able to hear from Mr. Chapa, that's your name, right? And I really, at this point in time, if, when I look at where we're at now towards the end of September, our students have been in these classrooms for a period of time. They've grown to know their teacher, they've grown to know the expectations from their teacher. And we're talking about a very limited number of students that this would be impacting. If it was, if it was at higher numbers, I would absolutely be supportive of saying we need to add additional teachers. But when you're having to, if you bring in a new teacher right now, my biggest concern is, is that you're taking away from the other classrooms, and there's going to be great hesitancy, because parents, hey, will inevitably say, my child was doing so well under this one teacher, and to, you know, to move them seems to be unfair. At what point do you really pick and choose which students are the best to reassign? And that offers great concern to me, and I, and for that reason, for what it would do and what I believe would be very chaotic, I think that I would have to, at this point, fall or lean towards the waiver recommendation that's coming from the administration, especially when it deals with 1 to 2 children on these campuses. So with that, I would be in favor of the motion that was brought forward by my colleague, Mr. Chapa.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the consideration of the class size waiver request from staff. Ms. Walton?
Can I ask one more question?
Go right ahead, please.
Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, have we ever successfully moved students to reduce the class size?
In certain situations, that has occurred. I will tell you that defining that successfully is probably, we'd have to see how we define that, because it is disruptive. And in some of these cases, the staff is actually advocating to do this, because they don't want to break up the class in some of these waivers. And we're getting that feedback from the school as well.
It's real easy. This takes a couple of days to love every single one of them, if you're really a teacher at heart. So I can understand how the teachers would feel that way, but I still think we've got to look at it from the student's standpoint. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Okay, so we have the motion then to consider the class size waiver request, the motion is to approve that district recommendation. Seeing no further lights indicating discussion, please vote. Motion carries with 1 vote against. We will move on then to the next item, which is a discussion item on our agenda, which is going through the process and the timeline for setting school boundaries for Pope Elementary, Spear Elementary, Swift Elementary, and Webb Elementary as a result of the opening of the Wimbis World Language Academy. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Raj. And this evening, we'd like to bring before the board our boundary process, very similar to the boundary process we've used before. And this is for, as a result of opening the Wimbis World Language Academy in the fall of '19, but the boundary process begins now so that we can establish boundaries this fall and make sure that we have a seamless transition. So Mr. Hill is here to present information about our boundary process. Mr. Hill?
So good evening, President Raj, Dr. Cavassos, and the board. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, this is boundary process time, and tonight it's just going to be a very general overview about the timeline and the process that is consistent with what we've done in the past regarding boundary changes. So the objective, again, is to review the boundary process and timelines for the schools that we mentioned, Pope Elementary, Spear Elementary, Swift Elementary, Webb, and Wimbis, as a result of the Wimbis World Language Academy. Why new boundaries? We always try to focus on the why, and in our 3 priorities, this one is still focusing on the learner experience. And you had a presentation from Dr. Wertz back in the early summer that talked about the whole Wimbis World Language Academy and the expansion of the world language programs to include dual-language and LoT. The current dual-language command, I'm sorry, demand across the district is greater than what we're able to fulfill right now, so this would address that opportunity. Again, a goal to diversify choice for our learners and the opportunity to increase the academic achievement. That was a frame that was set back in the initial presentation. The process will include the central office administration and the appropriate departments, campus administration of the impacted schools, parent representation from these impacted schools, as well as Templeton demographics as a consultant, and they are the district's demographers, and we've been working with them through this process for many years. We will look at the process of call for reviewing boundary options and the following considerations of enrollment trends, student safety, population balance, and the general capacity in the buildings as we go through this process. The timeline again, in June, Dr. Wertz presented the Wimbis World Language Academy concept and that timeline there. September 13th, we actually had a parent meeting at Wimbis Elementary to kind of talk about this process. Tonight here, we're giving you the initial presentation. I will say that I met with all of the principals of the impacted schools about this on yesterday, so they're aware of it. Starting tomorrow through the 28th, the plan is to select committee members, 15 to 20, including principals and parents from the impacted schools. We would look for October 2nd to We would look for October 2nd to have our first committee meeting with Templeton Demographics and the committee to look at the boundary options and those considerations that we discussed earlier. We've got a tentative meeting, second meeting scheduled for October the 9th. If we don't get everything covered, or if we just need a little bit more time, we've already got that scheduled, so that we can make sure that we have the, the calendar and the, and the right people at the table having those discussions. The plan is to come back to you on October the 18th to present options and to seek permission to hold open forums with the communities of the impacted schools to share with the, and share those proposed boundaries and continue to gather feedback. October 22nd through the 31st is where we have the proposed open forum dates, and again, all of this is tentative, pending on your approval, and the committee dates and the campus principals' meeting schedules. Plan is to come back on November 5th with the committee and to review all of the information that we received from those four or five open forums and get all that input, and then go back to committee and say, "Okay, here's our initial plans, here's what the input is saying, does this input lead us to change anything before we come back to the board on November 15th with the recommendation for the approval of boundaries?" We're looking at November the 27th of, once approved on the 15th, and there's a Thanksgiving break in there, that's why you see that big break. But sending out maps and letters identifying what the new boundaries would be, and again, they would be effective on August of 2019. So none, none of this impacts this year, there's no kids that are moving this year as a result of this, this would all be for 2019. Again, here are the tentative dates of the open forums, and the principals have looked at these, and we can swap them and change them around, but again, just wanted to put some placeholders down now, so that we could kind of map this thing out as we go through the process with the timeline of, of end of November to get this approved. And at that, we'll take any questions about the process of the timeline.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Appreciate the information. There are some questions from trustees. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Hill, I hope your colleagues on the other senior staff bring you a cup of coffee every day until November 27th, when this is officially approved.
Say that again.
I, I hope they're listening, because they may think they have some difficult jobs, and they do. But they don't do boundary changes, so I can, they help from a far distance and go, "Have at it, Mr. Hill, go out there and face the firing squad." Thank you for all your work on this. I know how hard it is, and I, you may not want to be known as this, but you've truly become an expert on boundary issues. So, so you've, you've done enough, and it's never an easy subject, but something we have to do, and we have to remember it's for a good thing we're doing as we're offering a new program at Wimbis. One request I would have, and I don't think it has to go out to all the committee or that, when it comes back to us, I would like on that map from the demographer, when it's drawn, I would like to know the two-mile mark around each school. And, and I say that from, I'm having some real concerns, and it keeps bubbling up more and more, when I start seeing some of these young men and women that are expected to walk to school and they live 1.9 miles away. And, and I know part of that comes from, state hasn't increased our transportation funding since 1984, and, and there's lots of other issues with it. But on rainy days, I look up and I go, "You know what? I have a four-year-old. Could I expect her in a couple of years to walk to school that far?" I, I mean, I just, I have a hard time with that, and I understand why kids, when it rains, are missing school. We have, our principals do a great job of helping other parents pick up and arrange some of those things, but I just want to make sure we're taking into account, as we draw these new boundaries, what that two-mile mark is, so we can start seeing that, because I want to see if it's crossing any major roads, what that mark is, and try and reduce that mark as much as possible. When y'all draw these boundaries, I'd also ask you to take that into consideration as much as possible, because I, I do believe it is a critical factor for the district in, in helping our principals increase their attendance, which I know they all work really hard at getting that attendance rate up. So I, that's the one request I'd have, is I'd like to see that with the two-mile mark around each boundary from there.
Got it.
Thank you.
We'll see if they can work.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Mr. Hill, could you go to the, the first slide where it was talking about your timeline? Okay, so you've got the committee going to be meeting, committee to work with administration demographer, so that's going to be, the first meeting's going to be on the October the 2nd, correct?
That's correct.
And, and you've already said that during this selection period, the principals of each one of the schools are already going to be, they're already going to be part of that selection committee themselves, correct?
The principals are on the committee, and each principal will, will be charged with getting representatives from their schools.
Oh, that's, I even like that better. I love, I love the fact that they're, they're getting them from each one of their schools, and I know that we've got one that's going to be working very hard to bring in. One other thing that I, I just want to think about, and you've been working diligently with boundary changes that we've had in the past. This has its own uniqueness to it, that we'll have the academy starting right in, in the middle of it. I would really encourage you, because I think we all agree that the principals have probably the most keen and unique perspective about their individual campuses, maybe sending out to them, you know, just send, send back to me your five or six biggest concerns, your five or six biggest are things that you think that we have to get right in the selection of how we do these boundaries. Because what Ms. Kilgore might say at her particular campus, may, there may be something unique there, that there's a certain populace of students that they have a very unique educational programming already in place, and that we, that we don't just miss it by saying, "Okay, this apartment complex here and these homes here go here," when we already have something in place at a certain school that may be very unique to the demographics of the students that we have at that particular campus. Is it making sense? So, yeah, so that's why I'm saying that it would be really good, maybe, to get that information coming in, since you already know that they're going to be part of that group. So when you actually sit down to have those first two sets of meetings, is, you can, that could already have been vetted out a little bit. Because I, I truly believe that the, where you're educating others of why this makes sense, if your principals have already shared their thoughts, I think that we could, you probably will be able to come from a, a point of greater buy-off, especially if these principals are reaching out to their, their individual parents that are serving on this committee. They, they would have a good understanding, I think, at that point. You know, of course, communication is everything, and, and I'm not telling you something that I don't think that you've already thought about, but I, I do see that there's probably a uniqueness, especially in that area, because you're talking about some very diverse schools.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Reich. This really, Mr. Hill doesn't really have anything to do with the plan for the boundaries, but I'm just curious, and maybe, Dr. Cavassos, where are we on the development of the program at Wimbis? I, I'm getting questions about that, because I kind of live near there.
Yeah. So, we are in the, still in that first phase of development of the program with, in terms of languages. We are also still examining the grade span, and I think that's the most critical decision, the grade span, as to how high that grade span will go, or if it will go. So, obviously, there's different models where you can just do pre-K to one, which is one consideration. There's also a consideration of, very similar to Jones Academy, which is doing the cohort as they come in to dual language, but then the upper grades get a benefit of language, and they would transfer in. That's still under examination. Dr. Wertz, I don't know if you want to provide any other information? And we'll be making that decision end of October? Approximately end of October? Yeah, or prior to that. And, and that, that program design, we're still getting input, we're still making sure that we're, we're building something that is of demand, but also sustainable, in how we started off. So, it's still under development.
So, are you saying that we'll be through with the design phase by the end of October?
In terms of grade span, yes.
Grade span? Okay, but...
And then the, the languages that will be offered will come right after that.
Okay.
I think the important part is which languages do we begin with, and then which languages do we evolve to. We know it's going to be multiple, but we...
So there'll be a phase two of the planning, too?
Indeed.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Walton. I don't see any other lights. I do have just one question, and it kind of stems off of what Mr. Hibbs' suggestion was, which I think is, is a great suggestion with increased communication streamlining ahead of time. Will the principals have, in selecting parents, the autonomy of choice on parents that maybe don't have kids active in the school at that time versus those that they know they can rely on that are still active parents with them in their network? Is that appropriate?
Initially, and, and past experiences, what we've asked the principals to do is to get parents who currently have students enrolled in the school. If we want to, you know, look at something different, then I'm sure we could have that conversation, but past is what we stuck to as parents who have kids in the schools currently.
Yeah, sure. I, I understand that. The, the reason I'm thinking along those lines is with the, it, it might be a challenge, it might not, for the principals to identify easily parents in, in the, in the school that they can bring as, as good representatives. That's the only reason.
The only thing I would add, Dr. Reich, is that when we have those public forums or open forums, that's also another opportunity for individuals who don't have kids in the school to provide feedback.
Sure. Okay. Very good. Well, thank you for the information. It will be, it will be great to hear what the, the recommendations are, the suggestion and request from Mr. Hogg on the two-mile boundary, I think, is, is significant. The input from the campuses, the administrations for the unique situations that might be happening in a certain block or apartment with that school, I think those are all valid, and look forward to hearing on our end, but will surely be an absolutely painless process for you, Mr. Hill.
Always are.
Thank you for your work. I appreciate it. All right. So, moving on then, our next item is the open forum for non-agenda items, and I don't see any cards, so we will move on. So, superintendent's report, Dr. Cavassos.
No report.
No report? Don't want to say anything about all the fun things going on? Okay. All right. Board members with reports. Mr. Hibbs?
You know what a privilege it is to be able to be part of the AIA State, and what a privilege it is to be able to work with such an incredible board. It has been eight and a half years that I've been working with, with this district and some of the best staff and some of the best board members. I do want to officially announce that I will not be seeking reelection this next year. This will be my last go-round. I look forward to serving until the end of May. I want to assure that the citizens of Arlington, that they should have great faith in this board, great faith in this administration, great faith in each and every school and each and every teacher that we have educating our children. It's been a pleasure, and, and, but it's, it's, it's time for me to be able to write off and let somebody else come in with some fresh ideas. So, I, I say this tonight just to allow the public to start thinking, you know, you know, who might want to fill the spot there. I've already met with one person that's very, very enthusiastic about wanting to potentially come in and be able to help serve this district in a, in a very unique and keen way. So with that, I just want to make that, and make that announcement now, so there'll be time for the board and for individuals to plan.
Well, Mr. Hibbs, didn't hear anything you had to say. We're just going to continue, and you're going to stay right here. Well, I, and, and Ms. Walton, I know you're up next. I, I just would like to say, it's, it's not a surprise. It is something you've made known, that as much as we were hoping there would be some other outcome, that you're pretty resolute that this, this was your, your final, your final rodeo. So it's, it will be a pleasure to hold on to you as long as we can through May. So thank you for giving the, the community the opportunity. It's a difficult thing, and it's not goodbye right now, so we will move on.
A lot of work to do.
That's right. That's right. All right. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Reich. And I know there'll be time for send-offs later, but John, you've helped me so many times and with so much to understand this role, I really thank you for that right now and will again, I'm sure, before you leave us. I just had one announcement that I wanted to share with everyone. One of my, our favorite events is happening on Monday, October the 1st, at the UTA Maverick Stadium. It is the Dean Corey Marching Band Extravaganza, and every child that plays a band instrument will be, will be there and performing in one way or another, and also performing with the UTA Orchestra. So, high school bands march, and college bands march, and kids play in the stands. It's, it's really great fun, so please consider coming out Monday night, October 1st, 7:00, Maverick Stadium at UTA for the band extravaganza.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. That is an excellent, excellent event, highlighting, showcasing amazing abilities of our students. Mr. Hogg?
So this is the time we get a roast, Mr. Hibbs?
No, that'll come later.
You've got plenty of work ahead, John. Thank you for all you've done. I just must commend the district. We just did Operation Graduation this last Saturday, and, you know, graduation may be my favorite, I don't know, first day of school's pretty good up there, but graduation's probably my first day, because that's what we work for, that's what we all put in the effort and time for. But Operation Graduation is one of those great days, one of those days where, you know, we got that idea from San Antonio AIA State at a conference that we're about to go to. We heard that conference, and we said, "We're going to do this." And I just have to commend staff on how organized and how much it's grown. I told, as I was at Sam Houston for, it's our eighth year, I think, to do it, and I think I've been at Sam's six of those eight. I told them, I said, "There's so much work that goes into before and after this Operation Graduation, and it's all the staff that produces that." And, and it was awesome to see so many staff members, because when we originally thought of Operation Graduation, we thought, "Oh, it'll just be tons of community members doing it," but it's really staff. It's those teachers on those weekends that are doing other stuff, and they're showing up. And you see these elementary teachers from the Sam Houston Network, or the Bowie Network, or the Arlington High Network, any of them that are there, that are up there walking. You know, I had a principal from Patrick Elementary, I had an assistant principal from Sam, and then I had a, a bank worker from Texas Trust Credit Union with me. And we went out, and we had one young man, and a couple of years I've gone and no one's come back, you know, and it's hard wrenching, but we know with people... But we know with people going out across the entire district, kids are coming back. And it's kids that just need an extra option, an extra push to get back in there. So I just have to thank all my colleagues that participated year after year, and just staff for all the hard work, to let them know on those Saturdays, sometimes these kids, you know, as I told one young man, I probably violated all kinds of rules, and I'm just saying, we, you're not supposed to go in a house, we went in the living room, I was about to start having coffee with the lady, like, next thing I know, we're best friends. And I looked at the young man, I said, and her mom, his mom was crying, and I looked at him and said, I think your mom needs a hug. And he reached over and just hugged his mom, and he went back, and he's going to 600 New York. It's just those type of stories that really start impacting of what it is. And this young man who is so close, and sitting there, and we're going to follow up with him, but he knew he needed to finish it, and he said, I just don't have the motivation sometimes to get up there and do these classes. But as his mom said, and in my broken Spanish, trying to listen, you know, luckily, we had great interpreters with us, because I was trying to figure out, you know, she just wanted the best for her son. And that's what it's about. And, Mr. Hibbs, all your work has always been about the best for the kids, and I appreciate it. And I think it's just a nice reflection of this entire district for doing that. And, you know, we always have our post on Facebook, but I can't tell you how many, that day, of my colleagues around the state were like, hey, we should be doing this in our district. And it's just that paying it forward, you know, I kind of, I don't like to give credit to other districts all the time when we take a good idea, but we took that idea from San Antonio. Robert Duran was the superintendent running it at that time, and we got that idea, and now I see other districts that have really started doing it. And I just commend our staff for taking something and growing it and helping get those kids back into school.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, absolutely. It was a great, a great Saturday morning, that's for sure. All right. So with that, our secretary is not here, but Mr. Hibbs has been kind of subbing in as secretary. So, Mr. Hibbs, are there items to be left to consider future? Go ahead.
Just one, Dr. Reich. Mr. Hogg just mentioned in that last report that we heard from Mr. Hill, talking about the, he'd like to see where that boundary in that two-mile mark would fall, so if we could just make sure that we include that in our future presentation.
And Mr. Hibbs also adding, and Ms. Alvada adding on the legislative agenda?
Absolutely.
Of the certifications.
Absolutely, both of them.
Okay. Very good.
And I also requested the list of the eight schools in the Strategic Support Network.
Okay, let's, so we've got the eight schools in the Strategic Support Network for Ms. Walton, the two-mile boundary, and then the 17 non-state-approved career certification opportunities for our legislative agenda and for Mr. Hogg for next week.
But don't let Ms. Mays know how bad I did.
All right. With that, the time is 9:35. We will not be moving to closed session. This meeting is adjourned.